Okay, we're going to get started. Welcome to the City of Asheville City Council meeting. Brian Haines, Councilman Brian Haines is not well tonight, so he will not be joining us. We're going to go ahead and get started. If you would please silence your cell phones and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As many of you might know, we are saddened to hear the announcement of our city manager, Gary Jackson, who has announced his retirement today. Gary, I provided a statement around 3:30 today about this news, and attached to it is a letter from me on behalf really of all of our city council to Gary. And I just wanted to take a moment and read that letter. This is not on your printed agenda. This is, we're going to just take a moment. So Gary Jackson has announced his retirement today, and the letter that I signed states, "You have made me aware that you are retiring effective December 31, 2018, and that you will announce your decision to retire shortly. You have served the city selflessly, wisely, and with grace and integrity. Our community is forever indebted to you. Under your leadership, spanning more than 12 years, you have led the accomplishment of great things for the city of Asheville. Among those, navigating financial hardship of the Great Recession, meeting the challenges of tremendous growth, creating a series of sustainable budgets resulting in a AAA bond rating, managing the greatest number of capital improvements to city infrastructure in its history, streamlining permitting and processes to better meet the needs of citizens, greening the city through dramatically increased recycling and other environmental measures, improving and growing transit services, building more affordable housing per capita than any other city in North Carolina, leading city staff through the planning of a $74 million general obligation bond program, making our city safer through improvements to police and fire services, and helping us forward as we ensure greater equity across the community." These are extraordinary accomplishments for any municipality to achieve, and they would not all have been possible for Asheville without your commitment and leadership. And on a more personal note, and I know I speak for many members of council that have served during your tenure, I want to express that it has been a privilege and deep honor to serve alongside you. You have helped us all become better leaders by tending so carefully and wisely to the governance process with us individually and as a group. Your humor and grace has made it a joy, and we treasure the experiences and friendships that have resulted. Gary has agreed to stay until the city council is able to hire a new city manager, and that we anticipate will take several months, so thank you for your willingness to do that. The announcement included an announcement that the council will go into closed session tonight to talk about that process, but we're not going to do that tonight. We're going to do that during the retreat, which is Thursday and Friday this week for city council. So that was just an edit there to the timing of that closed session. So Gary, it is our honor. Thank you. I want to...
I'm at a loss for words, and I'll leave it at that. I've just...
Thank you.
It's been an honor and a privilege. I'm so excited. I love my job and stay with it every day. We have the best team going in the organization right now. And that long list that you provided, those were aggressive goals and ambitious goals of this council that we, as a team, were more than honored to carry out. And that's what makes this such a fun job, is the reach that this council wants to have and what you want to give back to the community. It inspires us. It's not the work, it's just got to be meaningful work, and that's what we're here for.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so back on the agenda. We have two proclamations for this evening, and let me first just make one quick change. The boards and commissions appointments are at the end of the agenda. If anyone is here for those, we're going to postpone those to the next meeting. Actually, we're going to postpone those to the March 13 meeting, so just in case anyone is here for those. All right, so our first proclamation tonight is Black History Month, and Councilmember Keith Young is going to deliver the proclamation.
City of Asheville proclamation, whereas the month of February is nationally designated as Black History Month, and whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to recognize those who advanced the cause of civil rights, strengthened our nation, our communities, and our families, and contributed to creating a better nation, and whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the past successes and the challenges of African-Americans, and look to the future to continue to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. And whereas citizens of all races are invited to join in this annual celebration and remembrance and recognition of the contributions and achievements of Black Americans. Now therefore I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim February 2018 as Black History Month in Asheville, and encourage all citizens in Asheville to recognize the importance of Black history in our lives and heritage, and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Asheville, North Carolina, to be affixed this first day of February 2018.
And we have one other proclamation tonight, and our Vice Mayor, Glenn Whistler, is going to deliver that. Anybody who is here with Love Asheville Go Local Week, all of you people over there, just come on forward. We can't waste an opportunity to see all your coordinated outfits.
Whereas the City of Asheville is proud to join the Asheville Club and Asheville Downtown Association in supporting and celebrating Asheville's locally owned independent businesses and the positive impact they have on the city's culture, economy, and character. And whereas by choosing local first and supporting the Love Asheville Go Local Movement, Asheville's residents and visitors embrace our unique vibrant community and advocate for place-based businesses to keep us from becoming anywhere USA, and encourage a strong sense of pride in our community. And whereas by supporting the Love Asheville Go Local Movement, we create a stronger community by sustaining vibrant town centers and neighborhoods, link neighbors in a web of economic value and supply chains, and develop social relationships that increasingly contribute to local causes. Whereas by supporting the Love Asheville Go Local Movement, we create greater access to prosperity for all. The multiplier effect of both residents and visitors choosing local first creates diverse job opportunities, greater civic engagement, and protects us from the effects of economic downturns. And whereas by supporting the Love Nashville Go Local Movement, we keep money circulation in the local economy. For every dollar spent at a local independent business, up to three times more is circulated back into our community compared to when spent at a national chain store. And whereas by supporting the Nashville Movement, Nashville residents help to improve and protect the environment. The purchasing habits, central location, and smaller footprint of local businesses result in less packaging, fuel consumption, air pollution, congestion, and help to reduce sprawl and loss of natural habitat. And whereas by supporting the Nashville Movement, Asheville promotes and encourages increased entrepreneurship and access to ownership, which attracts new talent and in turn enhances the local economy. And whereas by supporting the Nashville Movement, we grow a healthy and happy community. Studies show that those who live in communities where local independent businesses are the norm are healthier and less happy. And now therefore I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, does hereby proclaim the week, Saturday to Sunday, surrounding Valentine's Day, as Love Asheville Go Local Week in the City of Asheville and for all citizens to join in this celebration and to go local, buy local, and think local first, then interrupt the year. In win, Sarah, I therefore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Asheville, North Carolina, with respect to the United States.
Really, really appreciate this. It's huge. It's also a great testament for the local businesses who made Asheville so special. So thank you all so much. Thank you, Councilor and Mayor.
Okay, that concludes our presentation, or not presentation, that concludes our proclamations for this evening. The next item we have is our consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda from council? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, Gwen made the motion to approve, Julie seconded. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have three presentations and reports. The first is the Blue Ribbon Committee on the Human Relations Commission Report, and I have heard that Patrick Kona and Dewanna Little are going to participate in this presentation, although I am not seeing them. Oh, there you are. There's Patrick, sorry.
I wanted to ask if Dewanna isn't here yet.
Do you want to have us switch around the order?
Yeah, would that be all right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Tree Commission. We'll put you on the spot. The next one we have is the Tree Commission Presentation on Gap Analysis Study, and I have Stephen Hendricks and Ed Macy. Is it good? Good, okay.
I'm Steve Hendricks. I'm the Chair of the Tree Commission this year. We really appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation before city council. It's evident that Asheville is now losing some of its tree cover as the city becomes more densely developed. It's very important that our future urban forests is well planned and is not an afterthought. We have many citizens and neighborhoods very passionate about trees and urban forestry issues. We have some of the Tree Commission here tonight, and we have other interested citizens here as well that are anxious to hear what is going on with urban forestry in the city in the future. Thanks to the help of city council in 2017, the Tree Commission was able to work with an independent urban forestry group to conduct a review of Asheville's urban forestry programs. This kind of review is commonly called a gap analysis. The gap is the difference from where the city's programs are to where they should be in the future to have a healthy urban forest. The Tree Commission is committed to recommend innovative but practical ways of making Asheville a sustainable green city that can be fully integrated into the Asheville Comprehensive Plan. We are fortunate to have Ed Macy as a member of the Asheville Tree Commission. He's an urban forester who served over 30 years with the U.S. Forest Service, working with urban forestry programs in 13 southeastern states, from Virginia to Texas to Florida. He retired from the Forest Service and moved to Asheville from Atlanta two years ago, and Ed's going to guide us through a summary of the review.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. Good evening. Good to talk to you all. As Steve mentioned, we hired a contractor called Dovetail Partners over the last year to conduct this sustainability review. We're calling it Gap Analysis for short. This project was funded in part by the City of Asheville. Asheville matched it with 50-50 grant, and it was also partially funded by the U.S. Forest Service through a grant with the North Carolina Forest Service. Our contractor, Dovetail Partners, is an internationally known organization, most famous for their ability to study forest sustainability efforts and forest certification efforts, but they've branched off into urban forestry over the last 10 years and have been conducting these gap analysis throughout the southern United States. Raleigh was one of the more recent cities that was done, and they also did some work in Austin, Texas. So we appreciate the City of Asheville's support of this project. It's very important to us. The overall intent of the project was to basically draw a roadmap for the Tree Commission for the next few years. We wanted to see where we're going with urban forestry in the city and do what we can to ensure that Asheville has the best state-of-the-art program in the country. So the primary objectives of the study were to engage a full spectrum of stakeholders within the city, to provide direction that increases the standards of practice and care for trees in the city. But foremost, to conduct a gap analysis of management practices to assess where the city is with respect to management compared to where the city should be to prepare for the future in terms of a lot of management challenges we might face, including continued growth and climate change, things like that. We also wanted to assess the health of the trees. We call them green assets. They are assets. And identify areas to improve their health, and then overall optimize management for identified ecosystem services. So I want to sort of introduce that concept that really the next step in this century for managing urban forest resources is to take a systems-based approach to manage not just for green and beauty, but to manage for stormwater, manage our trees for air quality, manage our trees for human health, and so on. So it's more of a system-based approach, and I think that's the direction we need to go. There are 11 categories in this review. I won't read them all off, but it starts with policies and ordinances, and it goes through funding and accounting and planning and management and green asset evaluation and community engagement. I know that you all got a copy of the report, so I won't get into the weeds on it too much. Within those 11 domains, there are 119 elements that our contractor looked at, and they basically scored each one of these elements as to whether or not the element was practiced, or if it was in development, or if it was adopted as a common practice in the City of Asheville or exceeded common practice. So it's basically a binary look at it. It's either happening or it's not happening, and if it's happening, how good is it happening? And that was the next level of evaluation. If something is happening as a standard of practice, is it meeting a minimum standard of care, or is the city moving towards next step activities on their way towards advanced management? So that's the approach that was taken. I'm going the wrong direction here. Here we go. Findings. We are happy to find that the urban forest program here in Asheville has many core strengths. A lot of the nationally accepted best management practices and standards of care are adopted and followed in the city. We also found a lot of gaps, specific opportunities for improvement, which include, number one, increasing capacity to manage a resource. We've sort of hit a ceiling in the city to do some of the stretch management, moving towards a system-based approach. There's no capacity to do it. There's not enough information on the resource itself, so developing improved inventory of public trees and data sets, and this means a comprehensive public tree inventory, and an urban tree canopy analysis, which is the bird's eye view, looking at the trees and what their coverage is in the city. The Tree Commission did a preliminary analysis last year, and we saw that in a 10-year period between 2005 and 2015, the city lost approximately 7% of the urban tree canopy. And that's a red flag for us, because when we start losing that many trees, then water, stormwater management becomes a problem, as well as a lot of other things, so...
Can I ask you just a quick question? When you're talking about urban tree, are you talking about downtown, or when you say urban, is it the whole city?
It's the whole city, and it's trees in all ownerships. So we're looking at just the green layer, if you're in a plane looking down at the city across all...
The whole city, okay. Thank you.
The third area for improvement is updating ordinances and plans, and there's a lot of community, and this is particularly with respect to tree conservation in the context of building, construction, and land development. A lot of communities across the South in the U.S. have some pretty progressive and forward-thinking programs that help us protect trees when we can, and if not, ensure that they get back, get put back. And the last one is increasing community commitment, building awareness in the community as to the value of our urban forest resource, and building support behind that. So those findings lead to a series of recommendations that the Tree Commission's making a city council, and we'll be following up on some of this over the course of the next year. The first and most important one is adequate staffing, including the addition of an urban forester staff. The city currently has a city arborist. That arborist treats trees or deals with trees on a tree-by-tree basis. An urban forester would take more of a systems-based approach. And help us with the remaining recommendations. Strategic planning, including the development of a comprehensive urban forestry master plan that could complement the city's comprehensive plan. This master plan would enable us to take more of a systems-based approach to managing the resource, to be strategic, to intentionally plant trees and protect trees where they're needed the most for stormwater, or to shade parking lots, or to help us address climate change issues, things like that. Updating city ordinances is our third recommendation, and in particular strengthening active tree protection during development and adoption of an urban tree canopy policy. And that's the city council you, saying that we would like the tree canopy in the city to go from its downward-facing curve to an upward-facing curve, and saying that we don't want to accept any net loss anymore, or even setting a canopy goal, saying 50%. We're at 47% now, I think. It's very important that the city set canopy goals, or they adopt canopy policies, then all kinds of programs and practices and policies can come behind it to support that vision. So we encourage this. And then finally, strengthening of public and private partnerships that engage citizens, increase awareness, and supports the city's urban forest goal. There are nonprofit organizations in the city that can accomplish things that the city can't, like Greenworks, for example. So strengthening those partnerships can get us down that road. So I hope I left time for questions. This is a list of members of the Tree Commission and city staff that participated in this gap analysis, and again, we appreciate the city's support getting as far as we have. Thank you. Any questions?
Hi, I have a question. So was, just remind me, was this the study that we funded out of this year's budget? Cecil got, what, $25,000? Was that the study, or was that study for, this report mentions a tree canopy study?
Right, this was last year's budget.
This was last year's budget, okay.
Right, and this year we're asking for the tree canopy analysis.
Okay, and we did allocate that, right? The $25,000, okay.
That's really great news. Thank you. I hadn't heard that.
And then, so that...
We did do that at a previous, during the budget session.
This, just, but like, this current budget's, yeah, 17, 18?
I'll double check.
It was either, I know we've done it, I just can't remember if it was this one or your...
I think it was just this one. Well, anyway. And then, so the urban forestry master plan is, that's the next step?
That's the next step, and we're kind of thinking that an urban forester staff position should precede the plan so that we can have somebody that can really shepherd that process.
Okay, all right. And so the Tree Commission is, I guess to some degree, this is your recommendation that as part of the budget process, there be a person included, a new division included?
Yes, that's correct. I'm trying to go back to that previous slide, but yes. Yeah, discussions over the last couple of months, we've really, really thought that an urban forester position is the most appropriate next step after the canopy analysis.
Great.
Because all of these other things, that staff position will help all these other things fall into place.
I seem to recall the legislature in the last couple of years taking a look at, I guess, ways to hem cities in even more on how they can regulate trees and tree removal. Did you all take a look at any of the limitations in North Carolina regarding cities' abilities to...
You know, we've tried, and it's a really murky landscape, so there's no clarity. We have the sense that there needs to be some enabling legislation for us to create more stringent policy, but there's other cities in the state that are doing this, so we're not really sure.
So you kept your recommendations to some things that you've seen other cities doing operating under the current regulatory environment that we're not seizing on?
That's right. And I think that there may be incentive-based approaches that we may take, too. One discussion our committee's having is using a tax incentive-based approach, like similar to the way you do with affordable housing, that if a builder plans for and actively protects trees on the property, that there may be some incentive for them over the course of a few years, perhaps even tying it into some stormwater incentives, because it is a valuable resource of stormwater management. And, you know, one thing that we're encouraging is to think about the cost of not doing anything when you have to beef up your stormwater infrastructure, because you are losing all your trees, or you begin losing your water quality, so it's kind of tricky, but we know it's done in other cities, we know it's done in North Carolina, we just don't know, we just can't, it's just a murky thing to us, so...
Right, are they doing it legally?
When I was in Charlotte this past fall for the National League of Cities Conference, Keith and I were both there, I did a tour with them of their urban, with their urban forest team. They have a team of people. It's astonishing. And I kept asking this question, you know, how is it, because they have tree safe requirements, I mean, they do the full-blown regulatory stuff, and I said, "How do you do this, and why can't we do it?" And he said, "Well, we do it, but we live in fear every year that the legislature will yank it away." And it's, I think they were clear that they are sort of skating on very thin ice.
That bill never did get through.
That was the tree removal. Right, because right now we require for certain removals.
And it's clear with development, it's okay, but, you know, some places have looked less, but we can get you what you need on that.
And one thing we're trying to do is talk about our trees as infrastructure, it's our green infrastructure. It's not the concrete, steel, gray infrastructure, but it's a really valuable asset to the city. And once folks start getting into that, add into their head, then fair policy becomes a lot more palatable. But I appreciate the legislative issue. It's just...
Sorry, where are you starting?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Let me just come back to the status of the program here. You received, my memory was refreshed by the Polycorks Director, and his recollection is that the Tree Commission brought forward three elements, and that was this gap analysis, which is of operations, and then the canopy study. Correct. And then third, the ultimate, would be à la infrastructure, the master plan of what long-term you would hope to see, not just in terms of the canopy, but in terms of the canopy, your management practices, your partnerships with third-party agencies, et cetera, et cetera. And so what was funded in this program is this gap analysis. And so what you're being reminded of is that whether it's in the 2018-19 budget or in a subsequent budget, there are these two other elements that are still on the table.
So the canopy analysis has not been funded?
Correct.
The $25,000 we did was for this study?
That's correct.
And if I recall, Greg Schuler is requesting in his budget funding for the canopy analysis. He mentioned to us that he was, so...
Yes, we will make sure that the recommendations are brought forward with the other recommendations in the budget process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Patrick and Dewanna, all right, and anybody else you want to bring up, but I've got your two names on here. And I do see... And I do see other members of the Blue Ribbon Committee.
Good evening, I am Dewana, and I am the chair of the Blue Ribbon Committee, which was commissioned to build the HRC, and proposed recommendations on the structuring of the HRC for the city. The Blue Ribbon Committee was comprised of Marta, Aquila Williams, Cliff Johnson, who is also here, Al Whiteside Jr., Matthew Bakote Jr., Dr. Dwight Mullins, and Dr. Darian Waters, and of course, Patrick Corning.
To start, I wanted to let you all know, and the public know, what this process looked like. We had our first meeting August 23rd, and we met at least 11 times in official meetings between then and the end of January. We also met in between each of those meetings very frequently, basically every week, in small working groups to move these recommendations forward as quickly as possible. We did an interim report to boards and commissions on November 14th, and we held two public input sessions, January 10th and January 24th. Both of those sessions had 40 or 50 people show up. And then we held our last meeting on January 31st, where we actually read through all of that feedback. It was like 40 pages of public comments. And we're actually able to incorporate a lot of those suggestions right into our recommendations. And you can see, if you're looking at the recommendations themselves, anything with a star next to it, we indicated that that came from the public input process. And today, this is the end of our process, we're presenting our results and recommendations to City Council.
We worked tirelessly with community and as a group to really drill down on the mission. We wanted to be intentional, and really, really intentional about the potentials for this HRC to really influence change within our city. So, the mission that we came up with with community input is, "The Human Relations Commission strives to improve human relations with priority on racial equity in Asheville by partnering with communities and agencies in an effort to better promote and ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Human Relations Commission works to identify and address all forms of individual, institutional, and community-level discrimination through education, advocacy, and policy recommendations."
And after we established our mission statement, we wanted to figure out how will this HRC work, what will it focus on? So, we moved into the long process of establishing our focus areas. The first set of focus areas are more around how the HRC will function. And for these, we came up with four big-picture areas, and I'll read quickly through the duties within each area. The first one, and a very important function of this HRC, is to make policy recommendations to City Council to enhance equity. Within that area, we feel that this HRC could recommend policies to City Council that HRC finds necessary and may be lawfully taken, to minimize areas of conflict and to promote harmonious relations among racial and ethnic groups in the city, to create a pipeline for community-driven solutions by allowing proposals to be discussed, refined, embedded, with the goal of presenting recommendations to council that possess strong community support, utilizing existing city resources to conduct research and gather data to analyze the equity of existing city programs and develop policy recommendations, review the demographics of city staff and committee members, and make policy recommendations to improve the diversity of these groups to better represent our community, and provide reports and other information to the community to provide feedback on the efforts and results of equity initiatives within the city. And from the public input process, we also added to collaborate with City Council to develop an effective process for policy recommendations. The second area for function is to support the efforts of the Equity Manager, to provide community input on the focus areas and initiatives of the Equity Manager to ensure these efforts reflect the priorities of all residents, develop partnerships between the Equity Manager and individuals and groups in the community to provide additional resources to enhance equity in our city, to provide ongoing reports and feedback to the community regarding equity initiatives within the city, specifically focusing on the outcomes of those efforts, develop policy recommendations that build stronger employment-driven partnerships, work with the City of Asheville to provide and facilitate leadership slash professional development for potential partnership organizations, analyze the membership of existing City Council-appointed boards and committees to ensure they adequately represent the communities they serve, and finally, facilitate community forums to provide input from the HRC members and the community during the hiring process for the Office for Equity and Inclusion. Next, to provide a forum for the community to voice complaints, we feel this HRC could act as a public forum in hearing complaints involving racial tension, discrimination, or other concerns of equity, to bring together the parties involved to discuss the facts, to assist in the resolution of such complaints, to recommend to City Council action needed where resolution cannot be achieved, and to develop creative mechanisms to gather concerns and ideas from citizens, and to work together with the groups and individuals to improve outcomes for the city. Finally, the last functional focus area is to engage the community around funded programs and policies. As we head into the next budget cycle, that's something that the community obviously expressed interest in last year, and probably will again this year. In that area, we feel that this HRC could provide a mechanism for community input and oversight of programs funded in the city. This HRC could involve the community in the development of outcome-based metrics using a racial equity lens, provide community input on the allocation of city funds as specified in the city budget, and members will be available for conversations, education, and learning partnerships to guide analysis through a racial equity lens. And also, this HRC, from the public input process, we added that it could implement inclusive practices for public engagement within the activities of the HRC and advocate for their use in city programs.
So, with the functional focus areas, we also developed the priority areas of focus for the HRC. And these are the five areas that we thought should be a priority, and I will read the duties for each area. Promote equity in public safety. Promote mutual respect and understanding between the police department and our community. Identify entities, identify opportunities for effective collaboration. Provide a mechanism to educate and solicit feedback from the community about police department policies, training programs, and other activities. Improve community trust in the police department by advocating effectively, effective methods of community policing by ensuring the transparency and accountability of the department. Review public safety outcomes and other data from an equity perspective, provide a forum for community discussion around reports issued to councils such as traffic stop data. Work with the community and APD to develop policy recommendations that can improve the equity of public safety outcomes. Provide examples and resources that demonstrate the development of positive relationships between the community and police department. Provide feedback and solicit input from the community on public safety trends and the effect of policies designed to improve the equity of public safety programs within the city. And from the community feedback, work with existing city departments, boards, and committees, as well as outside agencies. The second focus area is promote equity in educational opportunities. Provide educational resources and other opportunities to encourage youth engagement in the city programs and the local government process. Establish initiatives that assist with the development and retention of talent and expertise within Asheville and collaboration with city departments. Establish working groups between city staff and individuals and organizations in the community to discuss and analyze equity challenges using data. Provide feedback and solicit input from the community regarding the outcomes of educational efforts. Work with city departments to prioritize participation by city staff in racial equity-focused training and educational opportunities. Work with individual and community groups to promote racial equity through art and other cultural programs. Work with existing city departments, boards, and committees, as well as outside agencies. The third focus area is promote equity in economic development areas. Analyze employment income and business development outcomes across the city through a racial equity lens. Provide community input on city employment and procurement processes. Work with the existing city departments and local organizations to build a successful minority business community. Advocate for increased awareness and analysis of racial equity concerns in existing economic development efforts. Promote new initiatives to increase employment and business development. Provide feedback and solicit input from the community regarding the outcomes of economic development efforts. Research recommended policy changes that provide an equity perspective in the creation of economic development incentives and programs. Review incentives, program on an annual basis. Ensure representation from communities of color during economic development recruitment process. Encourage the city to increase the development and utilization of African-American-owned businesses for city contracts, events, and features, and publications. Work with existing city departments, boards, and committees, as well as outside agencies. Health and human services. Analyze health and human services outcomes for city residents through a racial equity lens. Provide a forum to discuss community concerns around health-related issues. Provide educational resources to community to promote access to health-related services. Provide feedback and solicit input from the community regarding the outcomes of health and human services efforts. Work with existing city departments, boards, and committees, as well as outside agencies. Housing. Analyze data on housing outcomes through a racial equity lens. Provide a mechanism for community feedback on city policies and programs related to housing. Ensure the individuals in different houses and situations are adequately represented in city processes and programs. Provide feedback and solicit input from the community regarding the outcomes of housing-related efforts. Collaborate with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee on solutions that enable affordable housing for all residents. Analyze the impact and efforts and effects of gentrification in Asheville from an equity perspective and research policy solutions. Work with existing city departments, boards, and committees, as well as outside agencies.
Thank you. I know that was a lot of information, and it's all in our recommendations, but we did feel it was important to read off the full list of duties. This is part of why it's taken us so much work to get to this point. After establishing the focus areas, we started to discuss how we would recommend that this commission is structured, and from the broad sense of the basics, we decided that there should be 15 members on the commission. We would recommend that there are staggered terms, so that everyone doesn't rotate off at the same point. And we felt that a term of two years would be appropriate for a commission like this. We do think that the requirements are going to be somewhat intensive, but that, we think, strikes a good balance of allowing members to get involved and make an impact.
As we looked at the structure of the membership, we also thought about what would be some criteria for board, for the board membership. And so, this is the criteria that we came up with. Board criteria for all on the committee, for all members of the committee. The city follows the non-discriminatory policy in the section of its members that is currently in place, in its memberships that is currently in place. City residents with close ties to the community that is most impacted by racism, oppression, and inequity is in this city. People with the capacity to attend meetings, people who have a passion for this work, people who do, who not only have equity training, but have demonstrated involvement in community application. Share some examples, and we would like this to be a part of the application process, this next statement, is share some examples of what you have already done that has influenced creating more equity in some aspect of your work or community. Attention to demonstrated actions, not just intentions to help. And then the last criteria is look for people that are still in it, not just, "I did this once."
After providing those broad criteria for membership, we also wanted to provide some demographic criteria, which is common in each HRC structures in other cities in North Carolina. For Asheville, we wanted to choose something that would set this HRC up for success based on the unique challenges facing our city. And the first point in demographic criteria, we went into this thinking it would be a good idea to always appoint two members of any group, just because we feel that allows members to feel more comfortable working in a group like this. We're recommending at least six African-American members, at least two Latinx members, at least two LGBTQ individuals, at least two, three professionals with influence, at least two to three youth ages 16 to 25, representatives from all, this actually says in our recommendations, five geographic areas, which is north, south, east, west, and central, two to three living in public housing, and two individuals with a disability. And our final set of recommendations were around, we felt for an HRC to actually work in Asheville, it had to be not just a group of volunteers. We think the city needs to provide some staffing support to make this whole structure work effectively.
So, we actually met with the city manager, and we have been throughout this process working with the Equity and Inclusion Manager on these recommendations, and how we could structure it to also include funding for staff in our recommendations. So, we are asking, we are recommending that the city fund staffing for the HRC and for the Equity and Inclusion Manager Department, because right now it's just one person, and we want to really be honest about the work of the HRC and be intentional about, even with the recommendations that we are making in the focus areas, if you took off half of that, it's still a lot of work for a volunteer committee, so we wanted to be intentional. So, the HRC provides public advisory role for the Office of Equity and Inclusion. We recommend three staff positions. The Equity and Inclusion Director, who will oversee and facilitate equity and inclusion initiatives citywide, manages the equity core team, provides consultation and technical assistance across city government, oversees the development, implementation, and evaluation of an equity action plan, facilitates the adoption of an equity lens by all departments in decision-making, manages staff leads, programs, staff's human relations commissions, communicates, cooperates, coordinates, and/or collaborates with public institutions and private organizations to address structural oppression and racism. And the next staff position is the Equity and Inclusion Program Manager, who will work with internal departments to develop, implement, and track results of equity action, of equity action plan, provide technical assistance on using equity lens, and plans and implements events, workshops, and learning opportunities to promote equity and inclusion inside city government and across the city, supports development of community leaders. Also, the Human Relations Specialist serves as the point of contact for community to report complaints related to discrimination, facilitates the process for the Human Relations Commission to hear complaints, supports the administrative needs of the Human Relations Commission, conducts research, collects data, and develops reports to increase equity, equitable outcomes for residents in areas aligned with the mission and annual work plan for the Human Relations Commission. And the next one is Inclusive Engagement Manager, and that person will facilitate inclusive public outreach and community engagement, consults with departments to implement equitable and inclusive public engagement, liaises between historically underserved community members and city government. So, with the recommendations for the staff positions, we understand that this work is not easy. If it was, it would have been done, we wouldn't be here developing this. So, we wanted to be real intentional about our recommendations. So we wanted to be real intentional about our recommendations and be serious about the outcomes that we would like to see. Like what is our 10-year ago, that was something that was actually asked of us, what would y'all like to see five years from now, once this HRC is implemented? And one thing we would like to see is drastic change around a lot of the focus areas that they'll be looking at. And we know that it's other city commissions that are working and have been functioning for a while that this, that this HRC can work with to get this work done, to really start moving the needle a little bit. So thank you all. If y'all have any questions, and I'm not sure if one of you would like to say something.
I mean, I want to thank city council for giving us the opportunity to do this work and especially the additional time we requested to do public engagement and to do that properly. Because you can see just from looking through our recommendations that it did make an impact and a lot of the ideas we heard made it into our recommendation. So the process works and it allowed us to feel a lot better and be a lot more proud of the work we did and the process to be able to see it all the way through.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much. I had the opportunity to participate in six of your 11 meetings and watched how hard, how hard you worked and how you worked with the community and with city staff in trying to, you know, craft this amazing framework. You started out with an idea and really developed something that I think the New Human Relations Commission can work with and really hit the ground running. So I thank you so much for all the hard work and I look forward to the work that the Human Relations Commission is going to do. So just, I really appreciate all the work you did.
Thank you.
And I want to take the opportunity to echo Gwen's sentiment. I know it takes a lot of time and work and I really appreciate how you distilled this down in sort of a step-by-step set of recommendations and that is extremely helpful in terms of how you've delivered it and what your vision is for how this will work. We certainly tried to study it a lot on our own and looked like there were a lot of different ways to do this, but it needs to be tailored for Asheville and Asheville's needs, so I know you've done that and that's great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to say this, so here we are. Yeah, I remember the first meeting that y'all had and you kind of got the, you got the rundown from the city attorney's office. And from that day to here and asking for the extension of time and everything that you all have gone through as far as giving your time, making a heavy lifting effort for this community, for it to be meaningful, for it to have purpose, for it to have extensive breadth and depth as far as what the scope of it is going to be and what it's going to do. This was a maturation that I couldn't possibly see when you all first went in. And I kind of went in with my hands over my eyes and my heart in my hand, hoping that you all would get it right. And I think you did, I think you nailed it. I think these are really smart beginnings and I am so grateful for each and every one of you for taking the time out of your lives to meet when you didn't have to meet, to push and say, we need more time to get it right. And some of those back and forth, even with me, and I appreciate that because it helped and it shows. And I think this, just me being here for two years, in my personal opinion, I think this is the most that I've seen. Any sort of group or task force or whatever, and not to understate anybody else's work on anything else, but considering how you've worked with the city attorney's office, how you've worked with the city manager's office, how you've gone out into the community, how when, you know, even I came to you and said, time's up, what do you got? You really nailed it. And so I really greatly appreciate it as well as the individuals in this community that this will help benefit for the future of the city of Asheville. So thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, so I'll echo thanks. I actually have about a half a dozen questions, but I'm sensing that this is not the moment for me to be asking those questions. So maybe I have a procedural question about what happens with this next and whether there is a more appropriate place for me to ask some of my questions.
Well, you know, we're going to have to create this, or recreate is the case it is, this commission. And normally I would say that it would go to boards and commissions to begin that process. So unless somebody else has a different thought about it.
Yeah, I guess what I was envisioning is...
I'm looking at you because Gwen's the chair of boards and commissions.
I guess what I was envisioning, and I check it with Robin, is, you know, that we tonight will gratefully accept your report and that we'll ask the legal department to kind of put enabling legislation to, you know, form this commission. And the framework that you've laid out, I don't, I don't know whether it actually goes into the resolution or whether it just gets kind of packaged up to, for the Human Relations Commission to work on. But during that process, I would interact with city council members and get specific questions and that kind of thing, is what I was envisioning.
Okay.
But obviously that's up to the rest of council. If you have a different vision for the process?
I think that's fine, personally. I would just add one thing. I think that we have an opportunity, as we always do, to have a staff report on this. And I think the staff member with the most chops, giving a staff report on this would be Kimberly Archer. So I would hope that she would give a staff recommendation on this as well.
Yeah, so really great work. My questions are just, get to a level of detail that are not appropriate for tonight.
And if you have additional questions, feel free to contact me or one of the other members of the Blue Ribbon Committee.
Great. Well done.
One highlight that I didn't mention, because it was not one of my bullet points, that is included in this staff funding is the recommendation that the Equity and Inclusion Manager reports directly to the city manager and/or city council, and that is in there intentionally. We were very intentional with that, given who she reports directly to now. And it seems like the extra layer that we're really talking about equity and inclusion, it shouldn't be there, especially given the role of her position and the importance of what she's doing.
And the fact that this department operates in collaboration with every other city department. And these equity initiatives are such an important focus of our city now. We felt it was, we do think it's important for this structure to work for that reorganization to occur.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We did have a request for public comment on this topic. We don't normally take public comment during presentations and reports, but if there is somebody here who wishes to speak on this topic, even though the committee is leaving, you can do that if you would like to, just raise your hand. Okay. So come on ahead, we'll just use the same rules as normal, just state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Ashley Cooper. Thank you for allowing public comment during this, I really appreciate that. And it feels fitting that this presentation was at the same time when there's an acknowledgement of Black History Month, because yet again here locally, we have Black and Brown folks who are being really significant and helping to show us the way forward to address some of the discrimination and injustice that's happening in our community here. I want to, I feel like the Blue Ribbon Committee has given us as a city and you as a council a real gift by giving you these instructions about how to make this a more equitable place to live and learn and work. And I hope that you as a council will give the power that's necessary for these invitations to actually be implemented. This, there has been concern voiced that this is, do y'all really care about this? Like, is this really going to lead to change? Or is this just a motion to check the boxes and to make it look like Asheville is a city that cares about equity? And so I want to speak as a witness to this process. I applied to be on it through Councilwoman Mayfield's suggestion and I went to all of the meetings.
Took all the notes for us.
Took all of the notes for you, felt, you know, wanted to see this succeed. And my concern is that, I just want to name that you recruited a very, an extremely powerful team of leaders from our community that are brilliant and invested so much. These are busy people, just like y'all, and so the task that you gave them, from my perspective, felt like an almost impossible task. And they're brilliant, so they pulled it off. But they have never worked together. They were given three months initially and they were supposed to figure out how to work together, but then they were also supposed to figure out the mission, the structure, the scope, all of the responsibilities for Human Relations Commission, in addition to providing recommendations about CPAC and then their own recommendations about an equity manager. That's a lot to do in three months. So fortunately, they asked for more time, but in the process, they learned the scope of what was being asked for them. The first meeting I was there, it was a lot of legal jargon and for people trying to onboard and get acclimated to what they're doing to have all of this legal speak coming at them. You lost, you went from I think 11 or 12 members down to eight. And it's perpetuating this pattern in this city, which is asking leadership, often of color, but often not as well, to do a ton of the heavy lifting work with no compensation, with no structure to help support it. And so I just want to see those same mistakes not made again for the Human Relations Council. You lost some members because they felt like this was just kind of a propping up, going through the motions. You lost other members. I know Lucia Doherty was the past executive director for the Asheville Bunkham Community Relations Commission and was, according to the committee who chose who was on this commission... So if I could just, 30 more seconds, I just want to ask that you please consider the recommendations for the increase of budget for the Equity Department, that that is extremely essential for this committee to be able to follow through on their actions and that it is an independent department underneath the city manager and that the Equity Manager is responsible for hiring the people who serve on this commission and that we stop asking people to do such heavy lifting for free and without the adequate support. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there, yes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Shell. I'm a downtown business owner, mom, a voter, and a core member of Asheville Showing Up for Racial Justice. I want to applaud city council for hiring your new Equity Manager and forming a Blue Ribbon Committee to draft this recommendation. And also the voters who have installed a council that is much more diverse than Asheville is demographically, because we want justice for all our residents. But that can only happen if we do make meaningful change. But our city institutions, including this space, has been built up on top of past and ongoing racial injustice. And because of this, our community has lost so much in leadership, creativity, entrepreneurship, and so many other rich gifts that our Black residents could offer. Other minorities and recent immigrants to our country also have so much to offer, if only our resources were allocated equitably. We could expand the base of our tourism and development so it's not just white folks who visit here and white folks who move here and white folks, white people and companies who profit. Here in this room, we know the data, the disheartening statistics, we know the history of redlining and urban renewal, and the reality of state of Black Asheville today. But I urge you to take the next big step and fully support these recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Committee and especially the budget request around staffing for the Equity Manager position, support staff. Without money and support staff, you have set up a skilled Black woman to fail. Don't make her a scapegoat. Make her your conscience. You should be accountable to her, not the other way around. We're only paying lip service to equality and justice otherwise. I'm here because I love Asheville, but this town could be so much better. We will never be the city we could be without the full participation and gifts of our non-white community members. No project is more vital to our shared success. Thank you for your attention.
Did I have anybody else who wanted to speak on this item? Yes, Kim?
My name is Kim Roney. I'm a piano teacher and I am your neighbor. And I do want to say thank you for showing up, not just with words that we were going to address equity as a city, but I think Ashley said really well, the burden that was put on our community members, and yet they showed up too encouraged. But now it's time to move. So you have a presentation and will, as a community, eagerly await a vote. But I've been thinking a lot as I watch my community move in this direction, as I deal with students every day who are dealing with these issues at school. And after generations of institutional and structural racism, it's going to take more than an office that's buried in a hall with only a funding for that position's salary. And that's why I'm asking you, in addition to supporting the recommendations of the Boardman Commission, to actually bring the Equity and Inclusion Manager in line with our top offices. This is not just for this year, five years, or 10 or 20 years down the road. It's about having the understanding that, do we really expect an employee to hold their boss or their boss's boss accountable to equity? And her story, his story, and their story has been made today. And so we trust you to make the right decisions when it comes to this vote and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wanting to speak on this topic? No? Okay, so we're, thank you, if you don't have to say anything.
Say it again.
And we will, we will move through this process with the boards and commissions and move through the full set of recommendations. So we appreciate it again. Thank you very much. Our last presentation report is the non-revenue water report. Sorry, it's hard act to follow here tonight.
Mayor Council, I'm David Velvin, Director of Water Resources. And thank you for the opportunity to share this report tonight. As a part of the non-revenue water program that the Water Department has, I tried to put a couple of things up to lead in that the program helps us do as an organization. And it does make us responsible stewards of our natural resources. And it does help us be effective, it's effective program for effective management and operation of the water system. If I get it the right way. Every year we do an annual audit or annual report on the program throughout the year. But I want to back up just a little bit before we talk about where we're at and how we got here, where we're headed. I think we need to see where we've been. So the informal start to the non-revenue water program was in 2007, so we actually just celebrated our 10th year anniversary with the programs in Agnes. The program started with major water line improvements, meter replacements, coupled with basic data acquisition at that point in time. And that was back, 2007 was some of the big bond issues, where a lot of major water line work went on downtown and other places. The formal water loss program was established in 2012 with data collection, refinement, and establishing of the program teams. And in other program teams, we have the audit input team, which is responsible for the data collection, the valve and leak team, which is responsible for field surveys, the unbilled customer team, which is responsible for ensuring billing accuracy, the metering team, which is responsible for metering accuracy, the pressure management team is responsible for pressure optimization throughout the system. And I wanted to give a shout out to the Asheville Fire Department, they've been super partners in this, in this whole program with reporting their water usage for their functions that they do. And over the past 10 years, and this is one of my favorite slides here, because I think it tells a true story. Over the past 10 years, the city of Asheville has sustained, sustained significant growth without extracting any additional water from our sources. And if you look at the top line, that's the water supplied, a million gallons per day, starting in 2007 and running through September of last year. And if you notice, it's flat. The green line is authorized consumption in million gallons per day, which has risen and is getting really close to the blue line, which is the goal, is where we want to head. And the water loss, which is the bottom red line, is on the decline, that's headed in the right direction as well.
Okay, so let me help unpack this a little bit. So first of all, non-revenue water is leaking water. Yeah, I just love in the...
Non-revenue, unaccounted for water loss.
Uni-water industry, leaking water is non-revenue water.
Right, right.
But what this chart is saying is that the supplied water has stayed steady, even though we've seen growth in this city and development, it stayed steady and you've made up the increased demand by fixing the lines so that we're not, we're not leaking as much water.
Absolutely.
And you're able to just satisfy that demand with what, with what we already have in the system.
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
Very impressive.
Very impressive, yeah.
Yeah, over the past 10 years, we already talked about that, the growth without extracting any more from our source water. And this has been accomplished through water system improvements and continuous improvement of non-revenue water program. And this... And this represents a powerful conservation story as efficiency has been used to benefit both the environment by protecting the resource that we have and not extracting extra and being responsible to our ratepayers. Some of the tangible results in the last 10 years, system losses have been reduced from nearly 7 million gallons a day to almost 4 million gallons a day. And this has been accomplished through employing best management practices and specifically the non-revenue water program. These practices are considered innovative, especially in North Carolina, because there are no environmental drivers or any mandates that drives this. So we're doing this because it's the right thing to do. Some more of the tangible resources are the program's accomplishments. Accomplishments have gathered attention from the U.S. EPA, who recently featured Asheville as exemplary in its Conservation and Efficiency Reference Guide. Asheville has also been invited to present at several national conferences on our program, including the National Water Loss Conference, the Water Asset Management Conference, the AWWA, which is American Water Works Association Annual Conference and Exposition, and Councilwoman Mayfield also did a presentation at the Greenville Conference. So the measured results for a 10-year period, our water savings are near 6 billion gallons per day, which is about our system, our city's supply for a whole year. And we've had avoided treatment and distribution costs of approximately $3 million by employing this program. Where we're headed in the future, this program has proven itself to be a viable resource for efficient operation and sustainability of the water system. And the plan moving forward is to continue refining projects, processes, procedures, and continue a proactive approach to operations and the sustainability of the water system. And just for a yearly note, from 2006, our water loss was around 4.5 million gallons a day. After the end of the audit, it's down to 4.2 million gallons a day, which is a 300,000-gallon a day reduction in one year. So the system is working, so we plan to continue with the system and refine it. And when I'll ask any questions.
David, would you again highlight, what's the financial impact of this? We're making more efficient use of the water and we're getting it to customers without losing it in the transmission lines. But what's the financial impact of this?
We estimated about, savings of about $3 million a year, right off the top.
So the importance of that, I can't avoid the opportunity to provide some context. So if you will go back beyond this 10-year timeline, before 2007, there was a decision made by the council that hired me, that they would sever the agreement and discontinue having an independent water authority with appointees by the City Council and the County Commission. And one of the primary reasons for that was that they could not get agreement to invest in the water repairs that would produce these kind of results. The council stayed with it. They made the decision, said we were going to operate this like a business. There were engineering studies done that identified the capital investments that needed to be made. Mayor Bellamy, Terry Bellamy led this with council support. We issued $40 million worth of water revenue bonds, which were repaid by the customers. So the customers' fees were gathered to invest in capital improvements, which were a primary and instrumental element in producing these savings. And from 2007 and then in 2012, we continued to get the argument that the city cannot and should not be operating this system, and there was significant litigation and expense in the litigation. The importance of the financial part here is that the City of Asheville has proven that this is the best management model for this water system. And what has been invested in retaining that ability to be professional stewards of this system is more than made up in the financial savings to the ratepayers. And it's clearly quantified in this. So if you wanted to measure and justify this, it's clear in the data. Unmistakable financial benefits to water ratepayers, not only within the City of Asheville limits, but the entire regional system and all the customers benefit from this sound economic and financial management practice. And it's investment that couldn't happen without the council's leadership and taking the risk, and then it couldn't happen without competent staff in the Water Utility Department seeing it through and making it happen.
I would echo that, yes. I, you know, personally, having been with Gary and conversations with legislative leaders at the time who felt that because Asheville backed out of the water authority, you know, we needed to have the system cease from us because we wouldn't know how to run it on our own. But in fact, the opposite was true. Investments needed to be made that we just couldn't get agreement on through this multi-governed approach and we were able to unilaterally make those improvements on our own. And so I know a lot of people that live in this city have seen water line work in their neighborhoods and on their streets, and that's because of this repeated investment and it's made a big, obviously a major quantifiable difference. So this is, we'd better be getting an award for this by one of these water leaking committees, national conferences you go to. I can't believe there's like full conferences to do it, but it's big business. But this is a tremendous, tremendous achievement.
There are national conferences, if I may add, because other municipalities are wrestling with how to make this happen.
Yeah.
They are looking for success stories and they're seeing their pipes and their distribution systems and their water plants fall into further disrepair. And it's going to be a long road back for a lot of municipal systems. And you've heard the tragedies of this managed municipal water systems.
And let me, on that note, let me just mention, David mentioned that I was invited to speak at a conference last fall. It was a, it was a conference of environmental advocates who are struggling with these very issues in their communities all across the southeast. And, you know, I got to show up and tell a great story. And thanks very much to Jade and Dave and the rest of the team for helping me prepare for that. And we, I mean, we were, we were the envy of everybody in the room because we, as Gary said it to me and when I was preparing for this, you know, we, the city, the city, its leaders, its elected officials, and I would say Gary, had the, had the courage to do what needed to happen. And this is just, this is nothing but a story of good governance and courage in elected officials. And it's great that we get to tell this story today and I hope people who made these decisions back then are watching as well, so. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our presentations and reports. We don't have any public hearings tonight, which is good because we've just set a record for length of time on presentations and reports. But we do have one item of unfinished business and can, I have here, oh, there he is. The tissue box was blended in with your hair. But we're here to talk about Merriman Avenue. Thank you. And I know there's a lot of folks that are here to talk about Merriman Avenue.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Ken Putnam. I'm the Transportation Department Director. I just want to just basically key it up. This has been a fairly long process, this review process that we've been all working on together. And the city staff has submitted the comments that are part of this package on the due date, which was the end of January. And then we've, in working with your direction, we've got a resolution prepared for you all to consider tonight. So other than that, we're here to answer questions, Vidila and myself, so I'll step aside and let you get at that part.
Okay, thank you.
The only question, so, you know, this is great work and I hope, and, you know, we, we will continue to insist that DOT keep us at the table. But how, have you talked to people from DOT and how was this accepted and have they proposed a go-forward strategy on how we're going to coordinate not just the Merriman project, but all the projects in the city? Or is that still an ongoing discussion?
Well, it's definitely an ongoing discussion. And as far as specifically for Merriman, I know that DOT's consultant is very busy putting all the comments together that they received and they'll come back to us with, you know, an action plan. We, on the other hand, have also been very proactive and we've already made a complete list of the 18 or 19 or so projects that we've got in the book. And we are taking steps to reach out and to make sure that we're going to be at the table on individual projects. Obviously, you know, some projects will be done much earlier than others. So we're already taking those active steps. And one of the main things that we're doing is we're identifying the projects that will be handled out of the Raleigh office versus the projects that will be handled out of the local office. And so far, what's good news for us, out of the Raleigh office, most of those projects so far have been assigned to Derek Weaver, who has been instrumental in helping us through the I-26 process.
So there's favorable anticipation that DOT will start working more closely with the city on these projects?
Yes, sir. I think that's a fair assessment and we're looking forward to that.
I had Billy Clark, who is our, who is now our representative on the Board of Transportation, the State Board of Transportation, who's a local, been here for a very, very long time. He reached out to me and has asked our MPO members, which are Gwen and Julie, to meet with me and him, and he's going to bring some DOT folks from Raleigh, and I think they want to include some staff to talk about just that, just about how we're going to get this working relationship right, not just on this project, but on future projects. And so we've got, we're settling on a date for that meeting. It'll be coming up here shortly. And they, of course, on the Merriman project have provided us sort of an extension, I mean, not technically, but to get, to get in this resolution because the timeline on the public comment period was so, was so tight. And of course, we heard from so, so many people on this project. So hopefully, well, well, I mean, you know, I think their response was, well, we just did the same thing we always do, but, you know, this is Asheville, so that's not really going to work.
That doesn't work. Can I just add, Ken, I want to thank you and your team for, again, putting together a set of excellent comments. And if I can, I just want to particularly call out Vidila Sattika, who I think put a lot of work into the comments. The comment letter on this project is something I've never seen, it's of a quality I've not seen on a transportation project like this, and it was just excellent. I mean, it just made the case brilliantly, so, well, well done.
Okay, so we have the resolution attached to the agenda. I've got it up in front of me. I know it's been circulated. There were a couple of folks that had some comments and changes. It, it's in the staff report. We, again, we are going to vote on this resolution and normally we have a motion and then we take comment, but I think what we'd like to do is hear from anyone who wants to talk on this topic first. And it'll be business as usual, three minutes. Please state your name. Dave, you're first up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm Dave Nutter, representing the viewpoint of the Preservation Society of Asheville and Bunkham County in opposing the current NC DOT proposal for Merriman Avenue and commenting on the neighborhood and historic character of the street, which we so badly need to set aright. From our historic preservation point of view, we urge you to help terminate or postpone this project until it can be rethought as an urban complete streets project, which is multicultural, engaging all the people affected, multidisciplinary with planning as well as engineering, multimodal, including pedestrian, automobile, transit, and bicycle, and multi-modal involving major and smaller intersections, greenways, gateways, and mixed-use hubs. And is also aware of historic preservation in purpose, form, character, and substance. We do not see that NC DOT has in any way lived up to its own complete streets and Vision Zero policies. We view both as protections of historic architectural and cultural resources. In its present form, the project will do substantial and irrevocable damage to the character of the study area. Historic and community resources in the project area include the Norwood National Historic District, the Grove Park National Historic District, the commercial-style brick buildings at the Woolsey's Deep Core of the project, the UNCA owns Rhodes property and house with its exquisite tree-lined stone walls on Weaver and Merriman, clusters of arts and crafts-style historic homes on Clearview Terrace, historic streets west of Merriman, and the natural and built environmental features of the Glenn's Creek Greenway and its tribute terrace. The commercial buildings offer an exciting adaptive reuse opportunity combining land, buildings, and water. We are aware that NC DOT is proposing to reconstruct the Glenn's Creek Culvert. This reconstruction is a special environmental design element warranting U.S. Corps of Engineers' attention. We believe that an urban street project of this magnitude deserves a thorough and interactive public engagement process beginning now. As a state-funded STIP project directly affecting federally designated National Historic Registered Districts, the project also requires a serious environmental and historic preservation review, which has not been done. We believe that improvements to the street should be held within its existing street width.
You can, you can just hand it to Maggie and she'll pass it around and we'll be able to read it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
I'm Mike Sewell. I'm the Executive Director of Asheville on Bikes. We are 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and our mission is to cultivate the culture of urban and communal riding through advocacy and celebration because we believe that cycling has a direct impact on the health of our community. I think you've already read our public comment. It was submitted to you, so I won't go through it, but we opposed the project as it's currently designed. This evening, we hosted a ride from Merriman called the Many for Multimodal on Merriman. We rode by Division 13 and we did a component called Selfies for Safety, where we took pictures of ourselves in front of the DOT building and encouraged them to get onboard with their own complete streets policy and Vision Zero policy. The ride culminated here with you all tonight, and I just wanted to share with you a thank you letter that the group had put together. Can I use this thing up and go, burn through my three minutes?
It'll pop up. It's coming. Right there?
There it is. And it says, "Thank you for your support of safe and complete streets designed to work for all people moving by a variety of modes." So, there it is. And it has all the signatures. So it's a bold position to oppose this project and it is appreciated by your community. Thank you very much. I do have to keep my comments directly to you, but would you please pass along to Gary Jackson how much we have appreciated his service and tenure as our City Manager. Thank you very much. And who do I give this to?
Maggie. Maggie. Happy Valentine's Day, Maggie.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, I'm a new resident. My name is Arlene Christensen. I moved here from Maryland, my husband and I, after 40 years of living one block from Route 1 in College Park, Hyattsville area, which is now called the Arts District and touches on six municipalities and is five lanes with the center lane that I think the State Department of Transportation in Maryland would tell you they would be happy to be able to dispose of. I worked on my city council in a much smaller town than Nashville and served as the Development Director overseeing developments in the area, commenting on them to the Planning Board and so on, and worked directly with the State Department of Transportation. And at least in Maryland, and I believe the person from North Carolina Department of Transportation that I met would agree with this as well in the state, the goal of the State Department of Education, Transportation, I'm sorry, is to get traffic to move as quickly as possible through an area and flow without disruption. through an area and flow without disruption. My husband and I went to a lot of trouble to find the right place to live in Asheville. And we are so pleased that we're in Grove Park and that we are in an area that's walkable. And we wanted to see it become more walkable. My husband's a road bike enthusiast, and at 71 years old, would be grateful for anything that can be done to make his road biking safer in Asheville. Having just purchased an electric bike, he'll be out there a lot. Anyway, we paid a lot more for the home here than we had expected to pay in order to get into this area that is so walkable and is so desirable at this point in time. And I feel that I owe it to everyone here to try my best to convince people to protect this area and only develop it further, to become more pedestrian, more bicycle-friendly, more modal-transportation-friendly, increase the bus use, and minimize the lanes, slow down the traffic. It's too fast on Merriman now for the uses that are currently there. And I'm sure in the future, there'll be more of that kind of use. 35 miles per hour, which results in 40 miles per hour, is no longer safe there. It's something that went with the past when it was a state highway, that was used as a state highway. So, I thank you for your consideration of this and for your decision to have this looked at much more seriously and thoroughly. And I wish everyone the best that's going to work on it to come up with the complete streets plan.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? How many are in favor of a road diet? Just raise your hand.
In general?
On the stretch of Merriman. I'm just curious. I just wanted to poll the audience. All right, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor, members of the Council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening, and thank you for the resolution that you've brought before us this evening. My name is Tony Hauser. I'm a North Asheville resident. I'm somebody who spends an awful lot of time riding around the streets of Asheville, walking around the streets of Asheville and riding transit in Nashville. I originally grew up in Houston, Texas. And there's a segment of I-10 through Houston that is, including the service roads on both sides, 22 lanes wide. 14 of those lanes are interstate. And at 5:30 in the evening and at 7:30 in the morning, you have 22 lanes of traffic that's standing still. Adding lanes doesn't solve traffic problems. Adding lanes creates induced demand, where someone who might otherwise ride the bus, walk, or ride a bicycle realizes that there's now more lanes out there, so they decide to drive instead. So, adding that center turn lane isn't going to solve the problem. It's going to create another road cross-section like South Tunnel Road or like New Lester Highway or Smokey Park Highway in a part of Asheville that doesn't need that sort of facility. Adding lanes creates more runoff and creates more flooding. Adding lanes increases speeds, particularly wider lanes, and causes more fatalities and more injuries. If you want to discourage people from coming to Asheville, I think it's a good idea to add the lanes, because it will make Asheville more like Atlanta. It'll make Asheville more like my hometown of Houston, the town I grew up in, anyway. I now consider Asheville my hometown. I'm in favor of a road diet. I think it would be a great idea. I think it's a really uphill challenge, because we have to change the way we think about transportation. We have to think about people who are only eight years old or yet less, and we have to think about people who are 80 years old or older, or people with disabilities that can't drive. Because when we create facilities that force people to use a car, usually a single occupancy motor vehicle, we rob mobility from the very young and the very old. And I think that's the community that we need to design for, is the 8 to 80. And if you're not familiar with that website, I would encourage you to check it out online and envision that future for the city of Asheville. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
I had one thing before.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone else? Okay. And we'll need a motion to adopt this resolution, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be very quick. And I want to thank everybody for, for all their efforts on this, Vidal and Ken, both of you in particular. One of the other things that, that I just wanted to point out here and make sure we don't, we don't lose this, obviously, the main focus of this has been on Merriman. As, as those of you who may have been really involved in this, you know, Clearview Terrace, a little road off the outside, there's been some proposal from the DOT to actually take houses in order to allow them to have, to have a different route. Because based on the way the, the current design is, their ingress and egress onto Merriman Avenue would be a problem. I went out there to take a look at it. I'm hopeful that, that during this process and during the comments that we have with DOT, we're not going to have to worry about that. They may still be able to use that, that road in particular. But I'm, I'm hopeful that as, as this process goes on, we keep those folks in mind, too, to see if there's any, any opportunity to avoid having someone have their house taken. Particularly in that area, I don't know if you guys have been out there, there is some, there is, there is some, there appears to at least be a path where a road could be put in that wouldn't be able to do that. So, just something to keep in mind as you all are doing that. Thank you all for your efforts, though.
So, I make the motion that we, that we reject the proposed plan because it fails to meet city goals, and that we request North Carolina DOT to collaborate with city staff to develop alternatives that align with city goals and adopted plans, and that safety accommodate all users, especially those most vulnerable.
I second that motion. And I hope that this will lead to NC DOT working more closely with the city of Asheville when they propose projects and see that it aligns with our, our, our goals as a city and how we move forward with it. I think it's very, very telling that the, the community itself wants things like a road diet and wants us to be a more multimodal city, and how we have the walkability and the micability of all our corridors throughout this city. And I think it's very important that, that DOT understands that as we move forward. And hopefully, we can build that relationship and, and work with them hand-in-hand. So, I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone else on council wishing to comment on the motion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. That concludes our printed agenda, because we are not going to take up the committee appoint-- what are we missing? You're going to make a mention, yes. Sorry.
So, we are going to delay the boards and commissions' decisions until March 30, March 13. But I would also like a nod from city council to re-advertise for the audit committee appointments. We received some additional appointments after the deadline, and we're also a little, we, we got some great applications. And I'm excited about the opportunity to put together a super audit committee. But one of the, one of the areas that we didn't get quite the number of applicants that we had hoped was the qualification that, that a person, the applicant have an active certified public accountant license. So, not, not previously holding a license like someone like I, you know, I've let mine lapse a long time ago. But someone who actually actively has a CPA license. So, just, I'd like to go ahead and re-advertise for the whole audit committee, but again, emphasizing the community that we'd really like some more opportunities to look at people with CPAs. And so, in order to do that, if I could, I'll make that, I just need your nods if you agree.
Nodding.
Everyone's nodding, lovely. So, Maggie, if you wouldn't mind, go ahead and re-advertise for that. But again, hopefully, it will come in front of council March 13. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of folks signed up to speak at the conclusion of our meeting here. I know a couple of people already had a chance to speak. But the first one I have is Catherine Walsh.
Hello, thank you, Mayor. Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Catherine Ann Walsh, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Elijah Mitchell Audubon Society and North Carolina Audubon. We are asking you to be aware, if you have not already, that this is considered the year of the bird, that the National Geographic Society, Audubon, the Ornithological Lab of Cornell, and also Birdlife International have partnered this year to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the migratory bird treaty passed in 1918. To commemorate this, Governor Cooper passed a resolution back in October stating that it was the native plant week at that time, and the First Lady authorized the planting of 1,000 native plants on the governor-managed grounds. So, why do I mention that? Habitat loss is a real and present threat to Asheville and all of our country. The Tree Committee has made some wonderful recommendations, one of which was that they, that we be aware that there is a risk that invasive and non-native plants pose to our plant community. Pete Wall, your landscape architect in your commission, in your staff, has given me a list of the preferred species for the city. There are a lot of native plants on that, and I was pleased to see that. But there are also invasive plants. I would like to urge the council to consider strengthening the list of preferred species, and to, in fact, consider that we would want to also prohibit certain non-native invasive plants. Other cities here in North Carolina, such as Winston-Salem, have actually passed ordinances to this end. And I would like to ask that we work together with Elijah Mitchell, the North Carolina Audubon, and ambassadors such as myself and Ginny Wagner, who is with me, to pass an ordinance to address this issue. Thank you for your time and consideration.
The next person I have signed up to speak is Bill Robinson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. My name is Bill Robinson. I'm a journalist and an entrepreneur. I'm relatively new to Asheville. I came here in July, and it's relevant because of the topic I want to discuss with you tonight briefly, which is homelessness in Asheville. I came here in July, sick as a dog with a life-threatening disease, homeless, friendless, insuranceless, and penniless. So, I kind of covered the whole spectrum of being less. I went into Mission Hospital and spent eight days there, and then had nowhere to go. And where I ended up going was a great place that really saved my life called Haywood Street Congregation. And they have a respite there, an eight-bed facility. It's small, but it's changing people's lives, and it's saving people's lives. I don't know if you're familiar with it. There are many different places in Asheville that do a lot and work very hard for the homeless. But unfortunately, it's, the problem's getting worse. It's not getting better. And I know that things like zoning variances on drive-through lanes for fast-food restaurants and pensions for, you know, pensions for the firemen and all kinds of issues come up day-to-day for you. But I, I just encourage you to keep the homeless in this town in mind. They say that 20, I've heard repeatedly, I've read repeatedly, that 20 people will die this winter on Asheville streets. That's unacceptable. It's, we, we owe it to our brothers, brothers and sisters out there to take better care of them. That's what our taxes are supposed to be for. That's what we're all supposed to do in this world. We're supposed to look after the least of these. And in spite of all the good work by ABCCM, by Eblin Charities, by Homeward Bound and A-Hope, by Rescue Mission, I mean, there's so many different agencies out there working very hard, and so many people dedicating their lives to this. And it's just not getting any better. So, I'm going to come back here from time to time and talk a little bit about the homeless situation in Asheville, which I feel is a public emergency. I'm from New York City, and we like to think we know homelessness up here, up there. I, I think down here in Asheville, per capita, it might be as bad or worse than New York City. It's, it's really a terrible situation. So, I have a number of ideas, and I'm working with people who have innovative ideas. And from time to time, I'll come back and talk to you about these ideas, share them with you, and see if I can get any uptake on them. I'm, I'm trying to make this my life now. I'm trying to dedicate my life to helping the homeless. I, I've never seen a politician say that my central issue is homelessness. But I would love to find that politician, that elected official, who finds the homeless issue so compelling that they just won't be quiet about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask the gentleman, if, if you've had an opportunity to meet with our homeless coordinator on staff, would you like to do that?
I'm sorry.
Would you like, and if, if you haven't, would you like to arrange that for you?
Are you referring to Christiana?
Uh-huh.
Yes, I have met with her. I've attended several Hayek meetings and Homeless Coalition and, and several city council meetings. I just want to keep this on the front burner.
Sure.
And I, as I said before, I'm not, I'm not here to, to put down anybody or their efforts. I mean, there are people out there who's helped save my life. There are social workers. There, there's a whole clustering of people who've made this their life. And I'm just going to keep learning as much as I possibly can and keep coming and talking about, you know, what I find out.
Excellent. I, I just want to make sure that if, if the council receive, you know, the, the council receives the recommendations, they'll ask staff to review them. So, I'm not trying to filter. I'm, I'm trying to facilitate for you.
No, I appreciate that very much. I'm, I'm grateful for, for everybody's presence here and just the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but if there are any, any other members of the audience who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, we have a closed session motion.
I'm going to let the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes, the law that makes the information privileged and confidential in North Carolina General Statute 143 through, through 8, 318, 10A3. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, 11A1. To consult with attorney employed by a city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between this city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit involving the following parties, City of Asheville versus Robert H. Frost. Statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143 through 318, 11A3.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.